Let's call this December the eighth meeting of the Irelde County Board of Commissioners to order and ask Mr. Robinson if he would do the indication.
Lord, we ask that you be with us tonight, help us to make good decisions for the county. We ask you to be with our state, national leaders, helping, help them to guide us through these, through these difficult times. We ask you to protect all of our service members who are overseas and in harm's way. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Stand now for the pledge of allegiance to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Masburn, are there any adjustments to the agenda?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, we have several adjustments to make tonight. I'll try to make it as brief as possible. The first item is to delete item H. Delete item H, which is a request for permission to create a dis- and distribute a request for proposals concerning a centralized addressing solution. That will be put on in, in January. So we need to delete item H. We need to add item N. Item N is a request to approve budget amendment number thirty-four to reorganize, to recognize lottery proceeds for the Irelde Statesville Schools and the projects that, that they're planning to do with those funds. That's add item N. Add item O, a request to approve eighty-two thousand seven hundred thirty-nine dollars from funds currently appropriated for airport improvements as matching funds for grants awarded to the city of Statesville. And then add item P to accept or approve the two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten North Carolina One Map Framework Ortho Imagery Collection Proposal and authorize the county manager to sign the proposal. Those are the additions to the administrative matters. Would like to add to the closed session GS, this is for personnel, it's GS one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven A six, and that's for personnel. Those are the adjustments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You seen the agenda? Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
No move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to approve the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Under public hearings, we have three requests. Our request rezoning case number zero nine eleven dash one. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board of Commissioners. This request is for, is to rezone one point six acres from R twenty to NB. The property is located, as you can see on the map, on Turnersburg Highway, twenty-one north, across from Strawberry Lane. Property owners are Malcolm J. Thompson, Lowell E. Harmon, and Melissa Alejandro. And the applicant is Leroy Templeton, who I believe here, is here tonight and who is representing them. This is a relatively small piece of property that falls within the transitional area within our new twenty thir- transitional commercial area within our twenty thirty Horizon Plan. It's a straight rezoning. I think you've been used to seeing conditional districts here recently, but we felt that the impact bait of an NB district in the transitional area on this road would be pretty minimal. The tract is currently vacant. This is a picture looking at the property. It's currently vacant. There was a house on the property a while back, but it was torn down, and now it's, it's just being marketed. Since this area, or this piece of property is located within the city of Statesville's USA boundary, the urban services boundary, which goes pretty far north of here, we submitted it to, to the city of Statesville staff for their, for their comments, and they did get, give us some back, and I'll go through those. They would recommend that the rezoning be conditional and exclude some of the uses in the NB district, that there would be right-of-way dedication, and the NC DOT makes sure that any improvements are made to twenty-one, such as a widening of the road, or turning lanes, or things of that nature. They also are looking for sidewalks, street trees, and elevation requirements as well, and I'll get to those comments in just a moment. Traffic on twenty-one at this point is, is manageable. It's around ten thousand trips per day, and the capacity is twenty-eight thousand. So there should be no significant impact based on the u- the uses that are allowed in the NB district. The staff is in favor of this request, basically for the reasons that I mentioned earlier. NB is fairly, it's a good transitional use, or a good transitional zone between residential and higher intensity uses that'll be up towards the interchange. Again, the twenty thirty plan calls for this type of zoning in the area. We looked at the conditions that were proposed by the city of Statesville, and actually, most of them will be covered by either our current ordinance in the NB district and the requirements of NC DOT through their driveway permit process. So the only things that we would not really get that the city was asking for would be, uh, street trees, elevations, and sidewalks that would be attached to it. And those just generally are not a rural type of requirement that we're used to requ- used to asking for. I would recommend in favor of this request, and I do support it. The planning board also made a recommendation unanimously to approve the request as well. And before I mention one more thing, I'll show you a couple more pictures. This is the view looking south on twenty-one, looking across the road. Again, this is, this is a transitioning area. There's some residential businesses and open, open land in the area. And this is looking north. I will point your attention to the, the action needed at the, at the end of the staff report, just as a reminder to the statement of reasonableness, if you don't mind when you're making your decision. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Mr. Smith, what you're saying is, once you take the requirements that the DOT is gonna put on this site, and you couple those with the requirements that our ordinance, that the county requires, the only thing that differs between those two things coupled together in the city ordinance is, is the sidewalk and a few trees. Is that what understood you to say?
Well, some of the uses that they had asked, well, they, the staff didn't get specific on what uses they wanted to get cut out of N, of the NB district, but we felt comfortable that NB is just not a, a zoning district that was gonna be that owners to the adjacent property owners. So the answer to your question is basically yes.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Smith? Okay. I declare this meeting to be in a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against this proposal, please come forward to stand, state your name. Since no one wishes to speak, I declare this public hearing closed, and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the zoning map amendment, to make finding that the approval is consistent with the adopted twenty thirty Horizon Plan, and that said approval is reasonable and in the public interest due to its consistency with the twenty thirty Horizon Plan. As a result, said approval furthers the goals of, and objectives of the twenty thirty Horizon Plan.
Okay, there was a motion. Any discussion? Here none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like, sign. Motion carries five. Oh. Consideration of proposal for exit forty-two roadway protection overlay.
The, the second item that I have before you, before I get into the actual specifics of what I'm presenting tonight, I want to give you a little bit of background on where this is coming from. This, an RPO, a roadway protection overlay for forty-two, generally an RPO, is an overlay that is put on top of the existing zoning. There's an underlying set of zoning districts, and an overlay, which is what this would be, goes on top of it, or on top of those underlying districts to provide different levels, or a higher level of standards. This was mentioned a couple years ago. Basically, this goes pretty far back. There was a request by the commissioners, and the town of Troutman had looked at us doing a project such as this a couple of years ago. A few things got in the way. We started looking at the urban service area concept. We ended up working on our twenty thirty Horizon Plan, and the initial look at this was put on the back burner. It was also talked about back in early two thousand and eight. Our staff partnered with about six other agencies to put on an exit forty-two citizens' meeting and study of the, of the, of the interchange and the surrounding area. This was very well attended. Over a hundred people were there, although it wasn't a, an official, or officially sanctioned meeting. What we wanted to do was try and educate people about what was going on at forty-two, and look at future solutions to some of the problems. As we went along, we, we did the twenty thirty plan. The twenty thirty plan was adopted, had recommendations for roadway protection overlays on our key corridors, and also the, for, including the USAs outside of the corporate limits and ETJs. What this proposed overlay would do, it would do several things. One, it would better the appearance of the corridor between Troutman and West Moreland Road, which is the extent of the urban service area and the annexation boundary of Troutman and the town of Morrisville. It would provide a consistent link between what Troutman calls the old town and their new, new town out at forty-two by putting standards in place that would be administered by the county and the town. That would make development more cohesive as it comes on, online. Traffic would be covered. It would be a big part of this, and I'll get more into that in just a bit. But significant improvements would be made if an overlay is put in place. Limits on access, limits on the, the proximity to intersecting roads, interconnectivity, and things of that nature are all covered within this. We're also looking at, again, with the aesthetics, limiting outside storage, and what outside storage would be there would be screened, and so you wouldn't be seeing it from the road. We held a public drop-in meeting, a public input meeting back several, several months ago. This has been a fairly long process, although we haven't meant for it to be. At that meeting, we got a good, a good number of people. We notified everybody that would be affected along the corridor. We got a good bit of participation, about thirty people, which actually is fairly, you know, fairly good for the number that we notified. Didn't get any significant comments one way or another as to that, what was, what we were proposing, good or bad, just curiosity primarily. The traffic flow at exit forty-two, and I, and I hope that you can see these maps when I get to them. The traffic flow in the access to exit forty-two is a huge part of this. One of the things that we keep hearing, and what we've been hearing for a couple of years now, is, you know, no offense intended, but let's not let exit forty-two look like exit thirty-six. So that kind of prompted us to think about, well, what, what exactly is the problem at exit thirty-six? What does everyone dislike about that, that stretch of road along Highway one fifty? So what we did is, we took a mile-long stretch of Highway one fifty from the interstate over to Morrison Plantation Parkway, and these numbers just don't show up very well. But what we did is, we, we counted up the driveways. Driveways cause starts and stops, people turning left and right, and what the first thing that that does is, that causes traffic problems on a road that has a, a large number of cars. Excuse me. What we also, what we did to compare is, we took exit forty-two. This is the exit, and this is actually going south to Flowerhouse Loop, which is approximately a mile. So we're comparing pretty much apples to apples there, at least from a distance perspective anchored by a road and by an interstate interchange. If you look at Highway one fifty, on the northern side, you have fourteen accesses, and that's either a road or a driveway. On the south side, the same holds true, fourteen accesses. And you'll see that they're, they're more concentrated from the Williamson and Bluefield intersection going towards the interchange. If you look at exit forty-two and Highway twenty-one going south, you can see all of these question marks. There are a ton of small properties along this road that, if developed as small properties, which may or may not happen, could contribute to at least the same number of driveways that are, that are shown on Highway one fifty. So that is why we are looking at some of the driveways, or the driveway limitations that you see in, in the document. We just wanted to take this and not let it look exactly like this. And I will point out that the Lowe's that's there now is an excellent example of some things that can be done to not allow that to happen. Limited access here, this is twenty-one with exit forty-two, limited access here with access roads, access roads in the back will, and especially if they're extended further south, and if we do the same thing on the Walmart side, are gonna significantly contribute to bettering the traffic situation at exit forty-two, once it is actually developed. This is showing the map of what, you know, just a conceptual map, because we haven't really gotten to this point yet. This is what the overlay would conceivably look like. The hashed area would be the area that would be affected by the overlay district. We're in the first step of a two-step process tonight. The first step is to put the amendment in place, the, what, the amendment to the zoning ordinance, put it in place tonight or at a future meeting. And then, once that is in place, we'll go back, we'll notify the public, we'll post signs, we'll put a legal ad in the paper, and say, come on out and tell us what you think about this zoning change. So that's really when the rubber meets the road at that second, that second part of the process. And then we go through with the same pro- the same public meeting and public hearing schedule as we do with this amendment. It's an unwieldy process, to be honest, because you have two distinctive steps. And if we get to the next one, and there are problems with the amendment, that, you know, could admittedly cause us some problems, but it's really legally the way we have to go about And I won't go through all of this, but I want to pull out some specific points in the actual amendment. And please, after I'm done, if you would like to talk about any of the other specifics, I'd be glad to talk about those. This amendment would only apply to commer- or non-residential projects, except for multifamily. Single family and duplexes or, or two-family are going to be omitted from any overlay that's put in place. We deal with front yard setbacks. One of the key issues as you're constructing a new road is right-of-way acquisition. If we put an overlay in place, we are going to require that the road right-of-way for a new road, if, if twenty-one gets a designated new road right-of-way, that the DOT is going to plan a new, an expansion project, we're asking that the developer or the property owner honor that. They don't have to give it to DOT, or the county, or anyone like else. But what we are asking is that they build off of that, that they don't build in the, in the road right-of-way area, and that they don't put parking or anything significant in that area. So when it comes down to right-of-way acquisition, it doesn't slow down the process, which was a big problem with Raleigh School Parking, we are asking that parking be, essentially, most of it, sixty percent, be put in the side and rear of the building. The town of Troutman, it, they require that everything be behind, either in the side or rear. We wanted to meet, have a middle ground. In our case, the town of Troutman has smaller setbacks on the front, on the front, which allows them to bring a building closer to the road. We don't have that luxury without going through and making changes to our entire ordinance, so that's why we came up with the middle ground. Ingress and egress points, that's, to me, the meat of this. To boil it down, what we are requiring is that driveways be three hundred feet apart. That's not to mean that if you're, if you have a small tract that is in place now, and your potential driveway is two hundred feet from your neighbors, that you can't do that. But we're gonna try and make every effort to keep that, keep that separation. And then again, that goes back to the Highway one fifty example. But again, I'd like to stress that if you cannot make it happen, then we're not going to deny access. The bigger issue is going to come when larger tracks are developed, and when larger tracks are subdivided. That's when it would be more of a mandatory requirement that the, any drives or access points. As, as this would be a, a pretty good example, there'd be a uniform spacing, so there isn't driveway cut after driveway cut. We're also going to require, if this is approved, separation off of intersecting streets. For instance, Flowerhouse Loop, that there will be a three-hundred-foot separation. Any new driveways be, treat Flowerhouse like you would a driveway, because again, it, it holds true. Three hundred feet of a dr- from a driveway to a, a road to a driveway is gonna have the same impact as driveway, driveway, driveway. We also are addressing signs. We are, we came up with more of a middle ground on signage, larger signs than our office and neighborhood uses, but smaller signage than our highway business and general business. And this is in line fairly, fairly close with what Troutman requires as well. And then finally, we have landscaping requirements also. This goes to that first point that I made about the aesthetics. Screening driveway, or parking lots, not to a point of six to eight feet where you can't see the building, but something shorter that's going to screen the cars from the road to a degree that's possible, and again, to enhance the, the aesthetics of the roadway. There are others in here. I could go through everything if you'd like me to, but I feel like if you have any questions, I'd rather just try and answer those.
Okay. Anyone have any questions, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, I do. If, if the road is widened, assume, you know, assuming that, that they took as much as one lane out, so to speak, would, would the setbacks that you're, that you're proposing, would they, uh, af- after the road was widened, would they still be in compliance with, with Troutman's?
Um, it's my understanding that they would, because Troutman has a similar requirement that, you know, basically, if our comprehensive transportation plan that's been done by DOT specifies a certain right-of-way, we're gonna hold a developer, or builder, or whomever, to that line in the sand. Troutman is going to hold them to it. They may actually go further and, and require dedication. But in the end, their setbacks are gonna be honored as well as ours.
Mr. Smith, my understanding as far as setbacks on twenty-one now, or the right-of-way, that varies depending on where you are on the highway, doesn't it?
It does. It does.
You know what the widest right-of-way the DOT has now?
I'm not certain of this, but I think that a hundred and twenty feet is probably one of your wider sections, if not the widest.
One concern I've always had about the signs at exit forty-two, when we talk about limiting the signs to ten feet, you're basically talking about a roadway, that roadway being Highway twenty-one, which the roadbed is thirty feet below the interstate, which would limit someone's ability to market their business should they locate it on twenty-one. Is...I do know the DOT allows off-premise signs. Is, is there anything here that preclude someone from putting an off-premise sign, other than the ordinance we have in place?
Well, i- in this ordinance, are you talking of a, of a bit, more of a billboard, or a smaller sign?
Just a small sign, tell them turn right to go to...
Depends on, we allow some off-premises signs. They're generally for businesses that are off the beaten path. If you're not located on twenty-one, or one fifty, or some of our bigger roads, then generally, we're gonna let you have a sign telling someone, well, I'm down Houston Road. So that type of situation, we would allow it. I don't know that that would help with a, with a merchant on twenty-one.
Well, I'm not taking issue with you. What was the rationale that caused you to come up with a ten-foot sign?
Um, well, we were taking Troutman's lead on that one. And, and I will give you, my rationale on, on going with Troutman's lead on, on many of these things is really, number one, make things cohesive as we go through, because a lot of times, you know, it's a patchwork, if you look at it, of our jurisdiction and Troutman's. Some of those begin in ours and go to Troutman's. Some of those pieces develop under our jurisdiction, then go to Troutman, af- and, and become annexed later on. One thing as a, as a town and as a county that you kind of hate dealing with is non-conforming issues. You know, not that you want to limit someone just to make it easy on somebody else, but it sometimes makes the property owner, makes the life a little easier for the property owner to expand or to do different things if a non-conforming use is legal or already meets the standards of another jurisdiction.
Excuse me. Okay, I understand. I've, I've been doing this long enough to understand he who owns the water and sewer controls the destiny of, of these things, but don't wanna be too restrictive. Is...
I will add that there are some significant projects that have, you know, come out of the ground, or are in some level of approval, or have, have been approved and, or in some level of development. This will not have an effect on those. Not only do you have, you know, grandfathering, invested rights, and things of that nature, but recently, well, this year, there was a new state law passed that acted to extend permits that were valid at any time in two thousand and eight. So really, even if you started a project back in two thousand and seven under a permit with a six-month life, if it, it went into two thousand and eight, you get, you know, another two years' extension essentially, because it's gonna go into, to, to the end of two thousand and ten. So basically, I, as I see this, it would be new, new development only.
Okay.
One more, and all. You say you're gonna treat Flowerhouse Loop like a driveway. That, that's gonna count as, say, one curb cut, and the next one has to be three hundred feet from there?
That, under this, that's, that's the way we would, yes.
So I assume that any driveway off of, or any development off Flowerhouse Loop on the interior would have to, the driveway access to that property had to be a hundred and fifty feet from twenty-one, as mentioned in the body of ordinance?
Yes, yes.
If commercial development occurs down there at some point, you may be inclined to limit the access off of Flowerhouse Loop, 'cause if you get a lot of water and sewer access on the interior of Flowerhouse Loop, you could see some commercial development on the interior of that, I would anticipate.
I think you're exactly right.
Any other questions? Any other questions? I now declare this meeting to be in a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against this proposal, please come to the podium and state your name.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name's Howard Bryan. I'm a property owner of two or three properties down at exit forty-two. I wanna speak in opposition to the board taking action on this tonight, if I may. And the reason is that changing the text amendment or adding some amendments to the county zoning ordinance does not require notice to individual property owners in almost every case. Secondly, this ordinance tonight is not here to be applied to a certain piece of property, but is here to adopt the text that will later be applied to specific properties. And what I wanna tell you is that I talked with a number of property owners today along Highway twenty-one, and not a single property owner that I talked with knew anything about this. Many points in this, and many of the proposals in this overlay are good, they serve a purpose. I have a lot of question about some of the things in here, and I know many other property owners do, too. I also know that tenants have a lot of questions about some of them, and developers have a lot of questions about some of it. So I may come across as a little bit biased when, when I ask you to be very cautious about this, and hopefully postpone action until the property owners along Highway twenty-one can be advised of what this proposal actually does. Now, I'll mention a couple of things, I won't go into a lot of detail, because I know you have lots of other things and far important things coming later, but I just wanna mention a couple of things. This, this document puts the county in the overlay business along Highway forty-two, and on those properties where the county would adopt this overlay zoning, the restrictions would be more restrictive than the ones that are on the property that's already in Troutman. Now, I believe the hope is that eventually Troutman would have the jurisdiction over all this property, but for the time being, the county would have this jurisdiction to enforce this overlay zoning. Now, on the front page, it, in your proposal, which I have a copy of, it says this is a three hundred foot wide overlay. Now, there's not a specific overlay distance, other than that reference to a three hundred foot overlay. But on the map that is attached, there are numerous properties where the overlay is four hundred feet, or some even five hundred feet from the center line of the road. I, I don't know if it's meant to be a constant three hundred feet down the highway, that is a hundred and fifty feet from the center line, but before this text is adopted, I would hope that that answer could be provided, whether or not it's gonna be proposed, that this apply to all of the properties. Specifically, there are properties on here that are as deep as five hundred feet from the center line. Another point in this proposal is that the state of North Carolina, in its comprehensive transportation plan, would, would recommend and set the future right-of-way width of how, the Highway twenty-one corridor. We're not talking about property just around the interstate, we're talking about a three point three mile section of Highway twenty-one, extending all the way from Troutman's existing jurisdiction, zoning jurisdiction, south to Westmoreland Road. That's about three and a third miles across that distance, and if this were limited to three hundred feet, it would be somewhere around a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty acres of property that would be within this corridor. But when the state comes along with its comprehensive transportation plan and recommends that the future corridor of Highway twenty-one be a hundred feet wide, or a hundred and fifty feet wide, or a hundred and twenty, or whatever they determine, all future setbacks for any activity by the property owner would have to begin at that point. That means that DOT, by adopting a future recommended corridor, would be taking that much property from the property owners and basically storing that property with no use whatsoever, except every three hundred feet, you could pierce it with a driveway entrance. But they'd be taking that property out of use, and that property would sit there until such time as the DOT or the public acquired that property for use of a right-of-way. Now, if that's a hundred and twenty feet wide, that's one thing. If it's two hundred feet, it's something else. That's a lot of property at the prices the property owners are, are offering this property, and at the tax values of this property. Much of this property is tax valued at three or four hundred thousand dollars an acre. So to take fifty, seventy-five, or a hundred feet of that property from the center of the highway, totally out of the realm of use of a property owner, while that property owner has to continue to pay property taxes on it, I think is unfair. And this, this condition may last for the next twenty or thirty years. But if this is adopted, that's what you'll be doing. You'll be saying the setbacks start where DOT recommends a future right-of-way for this three point three mile section. In addition, this, if adopted, would add another fifteen feet of nothing but landscaping beyond that right-of-way. So you can add another thirty feet that's taken totally out of the control and use of the property owner. And to take that property and set it aside until such time as right-of-way is ever purchased down here, I think is totally unfair. I think it borders on being unconstitutional. Maybe it's been done before, but I don't think that's a proper way to treat the property owner's property down there. There's some other things in here, and one thing is that even though this states that it's a three hundred foot wide corridor, it goes on to clearly say that it applies, in some cases, to property within two hundred feet of the roadway. So if it only is intended to cover a hundred and fifty feet, how can it apply to no storage of materials within two hundred feet of the roadway? I don't know how you would apply it if it, if it can only apply to the first hundred and fifty, and, and make it apply to something out beyond that. The minimum lot widths, another thing here, it, this proposal is that no lot could ever be created in that three point three mile section of highway that would be less than a hundred and fifty feet wide. That's half a football field. These driveways that they're proposing are as far apart as the goal lines on a football field. If you've seen a football game, that is a long ways to dictate, and it not, don't only says, "We recommend," it says must, driveways must be three hundred feet from an intersecting street. It also says, if you have a corner lot on Highway twenty-one and an intersecting street, that your access must be on the side street. He, I guess even if you have three or four or five hundred feet. But it, this, this ordinance has written says your access must be on the side street. Now, I realize that, that the traffic is, is a problem anywhere you go, if there's a much traffic. But when I look at exit thirty-six, and I hear constantly people say, "Well, we don't want another exit thirty-six." And surely we don't want a dangerous exit thirty-six anywhere. But the problem with exit thirty-six, if you go down and look at it, is there's a lot of traffic, there's a lot of customers, there's a lot of people trying to get from one place to the other. What do we want on exit forty-two? Do we want commerce? Do we want people coming from the interstate to pull off and spend some money, leave it in Ardell County, and then move along to Virginia or Maryland? Or do we want these people to just drive on by and never stop and spend any money in Ardell County? I've said before, some of you heard me say this, Ardell County does not have a Blue Ridge Parkway. Ardell County has Lake Norman, but when you look at Statesville, what is the distinguishing characteristic of Statesville that can benefit us economically in the future? It's not a Blue Ridge Parkway. You know, we don't have oil production here, we don't have gold mines here. What we have is this interstate highway, and we need to find a way to make it attractive for people to pull off the highway. We need to have billboards in this county that are well-designed and maintained, to let this traffic know. We have sixty to eighty thousand people a day coming up and down the interstate highways, and yet Mooresville does not allow billboards. Troutman does not allow billboards. Statesville does not allow billboards. Thank goodness the county still will allow a billboard if all the other activities are correct. But my point is on this, that this is an anti-development, this is an anti-business move, and the property owners simply do not know about this, and I think they have some suggestions on this, and could be very helpful. There are other things in this, the ninety percent opaqueness, requiring a business to build a four-foot wall to keep people from seeing your business, to me, just doesn't make a lot of sense. If you, if you're gonna pay a high price for property in this corridor, up against the, the Highway twenty-one, would you not want people to see your business as they drive past? This requires that you build a wall four feet high, or you plant four feet high, so that you can't see through it more than ten percent of the way. So one foot out of every ten, you could look through the bushes and see a business, or in a, a townhouse project, or an office building, through the bushes, or through the fence. Now, it just seems to me that the property owners need a little more input in this, and I would like to certainly suggest that the commissioners either table this, and there are some good things in this, but, but there is, I, I think this would be premature to adopt this as is written, and I'd like to see the property owners be given an opportunity and notice on this, so they can have their say on it before it's adopted.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Mr. Bryan, you, you're, you've developed a lot of property, so just out of curiosity, I mean, I, I really think exit forty-two is probably, is going to eventually have the same, some of the same problems that we've had at exit twenty-eight and exit thirty-six. I mean, Perth Road, we've got a thousand lots haven't been built on yet. When they get built, you know, that, those, those, those vehicles are gonna be coming towards that intersection. Right now, the, you know, the plan is looking to, to anticipate that road being widened, and certainly in the future, and I, I think right now, nobody knows when, of course, but at some point, that road is gonna be widened, or, and there's gonna be a lot of people that are very, that are gonna be wondering why it's, you know, why we waited, how, whenever we widen it, how long, why we waited as long as we did. My question to you is, is how do, would you propose, what do you think is the right way for us to make sure that we can easily widen that road once development comes back? Because historically, once residential development comes back on the lake, it comes back very, very quickly. The commercial build-out on, on exit thirty-six was extremely rapid once it started, and, and then, and then you're stuck i- if you've not thought about it ahead of time. How would you recommend that we plan for that road being wider? I- if you don't like this plan?
Well, a lot of this plan I do like, but I think that an overlay of three hundred feet to, to, for this much control may, may not be necessary. Mooresville, back in the, I guess, late eighties, about nineteen eighty-five, eighty-eight, somewhere along there, Mooresville looked ahead, and they established a highway corridor overlay. A lot of people didn't like that. I was one of the ones who were caught in that overlay in nineteen eighty-seven. We had a, a property that was halfway developed, and we had a site plan approved for the other half. When we got ready to build the second half, Mooresville came in and said, "You gotta take out twenty-five feet of your parking lot that you've already built, that you're parking on, that you need for your existing center that you already built. And you gotta do that before we'll let you get a building permit on the other half of this property." Well, we couldn't very well do that, that parking lot was mortgage property, and we told them it'd be destroying mortgage property if we dug up twenty-five feet of our parking area, and furthermore, we'd lose a third of our parking. And then all of our leases would be in violation, because we wouldn't have the required parking. And, and the comment then was, well, we'd rather have the greenery, we'd rather have the landscaping than the parking. That's not true in every case, I, parking is extremely important, but so is landscaping. What I, I think I would, I would suggest is that the, the corridor be established at some reasonable number. The DOT at exit forty-two and Highway twenty-one probably would come up with a hundred and twenty feet, or maybe two hundred feet, I don't know. But I, I certainly think the property owners, and, and would be better served by establishing a number, if it's sixty feet, that's typically what highway corridors are, is sixty feet. If a property owner's gonna bear the burden of the property taxes on that property at the prices of this land down there, that, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be restricted for eighty or a hundred feet of their property. They ought to have some use of that property. Now, if the county wants to adopt some kind of lower tax rate for that part that's held out for a right-of-way, maybe that could be done.
And isn't that not figured in, though? I mean...
If you, if you use a sixty-foot number and establish that as a number not to exceed sixty feet, that might be some reasonable number. But leaving it to the DOT to decide how much they're gonna take years before they ever pay for it is, is totally unfair.
But is it, I mean, is it not reasonable to expect that if, if somebody's gonna come and build a burger king there, that, or, or whatever, that, I mean, whoever buys land on this corridor knows that eventually that's gonna be a four-lane road, wouldn't you think?
Uh, if the traffic increases to that point, it, it should be a four-lane road. I, you know, I'd go along with that now. And there are numerous property owners down there who would be glad to give the right-of-way to DOT to get some roadwork done. That, that offer was made just recently, within the last twelve months, on a total realignment of Flowerhouse Loop and Houston Road and Highway twenty-one. There was a plan completed, the DOT signed off on it, there were twenty-four people in a room ready to sign the document and give some two acres of land to DOT, and a private contribution of two hundred thousand dollars to get it done. The DOT showed up a year ago, and they said, "Due to our revenues, we're not gonna be able to commit on this," so the attorney picked the papers up and everybody left. That was the end of the process. I hope that project is still on, and it's still there, and surely it'll be done. But those are the kind of things, to say that you cannot have a driveway for three hundred feet from an intersecting street, that takes all the frontage access away from, well, for instance, the Hainline property on Highway twenty-one. I, I have nothing to do with the property, but the owner of that property has owned it for several years, he's, he's tried numerous times to sell it, the intersection is a problem. If that intersection is redone like it should be, and like the DOT's agreed, this property owner will have about two hundred and ninety feet of frontage on Highway twenty-one. They won't even be allowed a right-in, right-out driveway on Highway twenty-one. And, and yet that's a football field in length. I, I just, I think that figure is excessive. And I, I just think the right-of-way needs to be established, I don't think it needs to be left up to DOT to determine how much land they want in the future, and say, "Okay, we'll take it now, but we'll pay for it in twenty years or thirty years," or whatever. I, I think there's some other things in here, some other minor things, which I haven't mentioned, but I, I would really like to plead with you, and I've talked to numerous property owners over the last twenty-four hours, we only found out this was coming up twenty-four hours ago. And I'd like to plead with you to, to either hold the public here and open...
How did you find out about it?
I found out it because someone connected with the county had a copy of this, and they asked me yesterday afternoon if I had seen a copy of this or knew this was coming up. And I, I have, I have, I don't know, six or eight acres of property there, and, and have done a lot of property assemblage, and I realize these traffic problems, we work as hard as we can, Commissioner, to, to try to assemble property and, and create the one driveway for every three or four hundred feet. You know, that's a good idea, that's a good goal. But to dictate that, that if your neighbor has a driveway, sorry, you can't have one if you're within three hundred feet. You gotta find a way to go across your neighbor's property to get access to your land. But that's how I found out about it. Someone connected with the county asked me yesterday, and that's the first I had heard about this. But that's my fault, I should read every GS number in the newspaper.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I represent a lot of people who could not be here tonight, and it's just really short notice, but it's our fault for not.
Can I ask Mr. Smith, what is our communication mechanism for when we come up with these plans?
On an amendment like this, Mr. Brian is correct. We don't notify the property owners specifically, because most of our amendments address the entire county. And this one actually could, if you choose to adopt it in other places, regardless of the name. What we did do was, when we held our public hearing, we, you know, as a one-on-one, we had probably six people in attendance that were associated with my office, and said, "Follow the process. Contact us. Follow the process. This is what we're going to do." And we put these types of things on our website, we're always open for phone calls, obviously, so, you know, although we didn't specifically put things in the paper to this extent, we knew we would have to eventually, when we did, you know, if this were to go through, and we put the overlay in place. If I could, I would like to point out a couple of things, or a few things, and I don't want to belabor this, but I respect Mr. Brian's opinion and his comments, but there's some issues I really want to just point out that weren't necessarily addressed in my prior comments. We have much of this in place on Highway One-Fifty. The three-hundred-foot separation, we don't have three hundred feet, but we have close to it. It's a different, more complicated formula, but half the time, I have to read three times to understand it. We did that six years ago, I believe, and six years ago, everyone told me, almost to a person who was associated with it, "You're ten years too late. You're ten years too late." And it was the same types of requirements that we have here, and we've got Walmart, we've got plans in our office right now for erosion control on Walmart. And if you don't think new development's going to follow Walmart, and that that road will get developed and widened piecemeal a lot quicker than twenty to thirty years, I think we've underestimated this whole, you know, development process around Exit I'd be glad to work with Mr. Brian and the property owners that, you know, that are down in that area, and I hope that we haven't appeared that we've left anyone out. You know, if this is delayed, we're not in a big hurry, but I will say that every month does count, when you're dealing with the possibility of, you know, additional cars, additional businesses. We just found out today, there's another business coming down at Forty-two. So even though we're slow, it's still happening quickly, and I think if we let it go too far, we will get behind. And again, with Highway One-Fifty, I hope, as a planner, I'm not accused of being ten years too late again on something like this.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to point out, and I agree to some extent with what Mr. Bryant said, but let me just point out where there may be a possible misunderstanding here, and then I'll offer a suggestion. In under F, ingress and egress, it says, "No two points of ingress and egress on Highway Twenty-one is measured at their closest distance shall be closer than three hundred feet apart unless driveways cannot be shared, and doing so would prohibit ingress and egress to a lot." So the point that a driveway has to be three hundred feet separation from another driveway, and that tags, Mr. Smith has given the property owner an out. He's given him the opportunity to not be three hundred feet apart, which to some extent addresses Mr. Bryant's concern, although perhaps in his mind, not totally. So I think the point I'm trying to make is that I think there is an effort in this, in the body of this ordinance, to take into consideration some of the concerns that Mr. Bryant raises, albeit not to his satisfaction. So I suggest that perhaps Mr. Smith work with some of the property owners as he suggested, and perhaps hold a meeting with them, and listen to their concerns, and come back to us at a later date for a discussion.
If we do that, if we do that, let's get a reasonable time period, because, you know, when we talked about doing a Perth Road area study, it was the Great Oklahoma Land Rush. Everybody went, plotted out, claimed that they were grandfathered, and by the time we had a plan, it didn't apply to anybody. So I definitely, if we're going to delay it, it should be for, delay this vote, it should be for a reasonable and fixed period of time that, you know, that we can come back with something better.
Is anyone else wish to speak either for or against?
Mr. Chairman? Oh, sorry.
Hello, my name's Erica Martin. I'm community planner for the town of Troutman, and I wanted to say thank you for considering this overlay, as Exit Forty-two is a gateway into our community, and we believe that these standards will help preserve the character of our town and help us reach community goals. As far as signage, we don't want the focus of our town to be on signage, so that's why we limit the heights. Landscaping, any Realtor will tell you that that adds value to property. And the limited access, we want to keep the traffic flowing, but we're going to give access, we're not going to deny it, as you mentioned a moment before. So I just wanted to say that the staff has done a real good job of finding compromises, and thank you for this consideration.
Any questions? Okay. Anyone else wish to speak?
Mr. Chairman, can I ask one more question, Mr. Bryant?
Sure. Mr. Brian?
Mr. Brian, do you have anything else to add?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry, I thought someone said they had a question.
Oh, that was me, and I just wanted to make sure you...
No, I don't have anything else. There are several other things in here, but I think we've addressed the things that I wanted to point out. I would, just for the benefit of size, this limits every property from now on to one sixty-four square foot sign, not more than ten feet off the ground. If you're building a fifty-acre development, twenty-acre development, two-acre development, every piece of property, as the way I read this, on the books now, in the future, will be limited to one sixty-four square foot sign, which is just a little less than half the size of this board. For a major development with five or ten or fifteen tenants, with landscaping across the front, there's no way anyone from the interstate highway, or not familiar with the area, could even know that a business had a freestanding site on a fifty- or seventy-five acre development. There's just, there's no identification. You couldn't see it, and it wouldn't have a sign.
Mr. Smith, how much time do you think it would take to take a look and review this? Just take a look and give an honest...
Mr. Bryant and I were just talking, that he had suggested maybe coming back in February. I could do it quicker than that with no problem, but maybe getting everyone together might be difficult over the holidays. So might push us to maybe the first meeting in February.
Okay.
If that's reasonable with everyone.
Yeah, it'll work.
No one else wishes?
You're good?
No one else wishes to speak? I declare this public hearing closed. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we would direct Mr. Smith to meet with these property owners and address their concerns. Mr. Bryant raises some valid concerns. One thing I think we need to say is, I don't want to see us get in the situation where someday, somebody's trying to move through an intersection, and they can't get through the intersection because cars are coming out of a side street, much like it happens on Exit Thirty-six, or certainly west or east of there. You simply can't clear a lot of those intersections. So I think that the limited number of driveways and curb cuts has some validity. I realize you can go too far on those things, but there ought to be some point of agreement on that, so that'd be my motion instruct Mr. Smith.
Mr. Johnson, just for clarification, is that to table the motion until the first meeting of February?
Yes, sir. We'll table action to the first of February.
Motion's been made. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, like, sign. Motion carries. I'd like to clarify a five-minute recess.
Okay.
Mr. President, I would like to recognize that Mr. Robson, he has an introduction.
Yes, it's our privilege tonight to have one of our Boy Scouts from Troop One Seventy-One in Mooresville, North Carolina, John Dawson. John, if you could stand up. John is a Star Scout. He's an Assistant Patrol Leader in Troop One Seventy-One, and he is working on his citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. And one of those requirements is to discuss a problem that was addressed or brought up during a Commissioners' meeting, and based upon his comments and questions at the break, he's got a lot to write about. So anyway, John is a bright young man, he's a gifted leader. I assume he's going to be a patrol leader here in a few weeks, and anytime people wonder about what the future of America, what kind of hands they're in, if you meet John, you realize we're going to be okay. Thanks for being here.
Okay, our final consideration under public hearings is a consideration of approval of the NC Three Corridor Study.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, thank you so much for having me here this evening. I'm Bill Destin with Central Indiana Council of Governments. If I sound a little raspy, it's because I am a little raspy. I'm coming off of a real bad cold, and as Ron can attest, just a couple of days ago, I was totally without voice. So this is actually, this is actually pretty good. So what I'm going to do this evening is briefly go over the NC Three study, and this is a study that involves a number of local jurisdictions in both Cabarrus and Iredell County, to talk about the future of NC Three and another road called the East-West Connector that connects NC Three with Langtree Road. There were three jurisdictions that participated in this study, Iredell County, of course, the town of Mooresville, and the city of Kannapolis. And with NC Three, we're talking between Kannapolis and Mooresville, a distance of about twelve miles. The ADT is the average daily traffic counts on the highway right now...
Andy, I'd like to recognize Mr. Robson, he has an introduction.
Yes, it's our privilege tonight to have one of our Boy Scouts from Troop One Seventy-One in Mooresville, North Carolina, John Dawson. John, if you could stand up. John is a Star Scout. He's an Assistant Patrol Leader in Troop One Seventy-One, and he is working on his citizenship and the Community Merit Badge. And one of those requirements is to discuss a problem that was addressed or brought up during a Commissioner's meeting, and based upon his comments and questions at the break, he's got a lot to write about. So anyway, John is a bright young man. He's a gifted leader. I assume he's going to be a patrol leader here in a few weeks. And anytime people wonder about what the future of America, what kind of hands they're in, if you meet John, you realize we're going to be okay. Thanks for being here.
Okay, our final consideration under public hearings is consideration of approval of the NC Three Corridor Study.
Chairman Commissioners, thank you so much for having me here this evening. I'm Bill Destin with Central Island Council of Governments. If I sound a little raspy, it's because I am a little raspy. I'm coming off of a real bad cold, and as Ron can attest, just a couple of days ago, I was totally without voice. So this is actually, this is actually pretty good. So what I'm going to do this evening is briefly go over the NC Three study. And this is a study that involves a number of local jurisdictions in both Cabarrus and Iredell County, to talk about the future of NC Three and another road called the East-West Connector that connects NC Three with Langtree Road. There were three jurisdictions that participated in this study: Iredell County, of course, the town of Mooresville, and the city of Kannapolis. And with NC Three, we're talking between Kannapolis and Mooresville, a distance of about twelve miles. The ADTs, the Average Daily Traffic Counts on the highway right now, are not very high. We talked about ten thousand cars before, and that's about where it is right now, about seventy-five hundred to ten thousand cars daily. But notice by 2030, that average daily volume is expected to triple. And why? We've got Kannapolis, the research campus, Lowe's, the hospital at the Mooresville end, and just a lot of potential for additional traffic. There are four jurisdictions that cover the entire span, the three jurisdictions that I mentioned before, and Cabarrus County. The study area for the study basically started right about the Kannapolis Parkway, extended up into Iredell County, and basically ended at about Center Avenue in Mooresville. And I'll talk about the East-West Connector, which is that, in just a little bit. The East-West Connector is about five miles in length, very limited amount of traffic on it now. The road doesn't even exist for all practical purposes. In fact, the town just got through with a study that talked about a future alignment for the East-West Connector. But the East-West Connector does lie within the jurisdiction of both Mooresville and Iredell County. And then you can see the alignment here, or a proposal. This is not the alignment per se, but basically, we're starting at Rocky River in NC Three, just north of the DEI facility, crossing Shears Road, NC One Fifteen, and extending to Langtree Road, just north of the Exit Thirty-One interchange. Couple of things to keep in mind: there are no funds. DOT has no funds for the construction of the East-West Connector. DOT has no funds in place right now for making any improvements on NC Three. This is looking, as Ron mentioned before, looking into the future. This is looking into the future. We've got the new exit at Exit Thirty-One. We have the Transit Eighty-Three X bus coming from Charlotte. There has been some talk of perhaps a rail line going up from Charlotte. I mentioned about Lowe's and the Research Center. Utilities, and this is very, very important. Who are the utility players along the corridors? And it's Mooresville and Kannapolis. Neither Cabarrus County nor Iredell County are in the utility business. One thing that you need to keep in mind, and this will come up a little bit later when I show you some maps, about Kannapolis and what their plans are. They have utilities, or will have utilities, coming up to go up to Odell School and Davidson School, Odell School and Davidson Road. The city could, has the ability to extend utilities up towards the Iredell County line. So Kannapolis could be a utility player up to where the Turtle Creek Nursery is, at the edge of the county line. With the East-West Connector, it's expected to use a portion of the Rocky River, excuse me, the Rocky River Road alignment. Areas near I Seventy-Seven, this was not an issue for the study, because the town of Mooresville has a Mountmoren plan in place, and we basically left that alone. I mentioned about Kannapolis and their annexation near Odell School Road. That'll come up in just a little bit. We had a number of public meetings up and down the corridor, some held in Kannapolis, some held in Mooresville. And I don't want to say to a person, but I think the large majority of the folks in attendance at both sides basically said, whatever we do, let's try to keep this road as rural as it currently is. And when I was in Kannapolis, I think I was quoted in the paper the last time, that I mentioned that there are only two places along the entire corridor now that you can buy a candy bar, at Odell School, at Davidson Road in Kannapolis, and in a small convenience store just south of Center Avenue in Mooresville. There are very, very few traditional retail outlets on the corridor. It's mostly houses, it's mostly fields. There's the nursery, a couple of churches, but that's about it. There just has not been historically a lot of development along the corridor. This is a zoning map, and this sort of bears it out. And this is a composite zoning map, where we sort of equalize zoning districts. So you see a lot of that darkish green up and down NC Three, which basically says that right now, current zoning is mostly rural in nature. Rural has different characteristics, and I'll get to that in just a second. As you can see here in Mooresville, once we get into Mooresville, we have a lot more different types of zoning districts. This is Shears Road, this is the East-West Connector. But even in the guts, the heart of the East-West Connector, it's all zoned RA by Iredell County right now. This, of course, is near I Seventy-Seven and Langtree Road, and we have a lot of development going there. But basically, what I was saying before, except for that convenience store right there, this is a site that was annexed by Kannapolis. It was a satellite annexation, and utilities are coming up, not coming this way, but coming up Odell School Road to serve this site, what's called the Wayne Brothers Site, and eventually, the city of Kannapolis could be in a position to extend utilities here. There are no plans by the city to extend utilities in this general area, largely because the reservoir, the Colli Creek Reservoir, lies there, and would be extremely expensive to serve that area. Whoops. I think I skipped. One other thing that, from a zoning perspective, that you need to take into consideration, and this map does not show it as well as it could, is the water sheds. Everything in this light green, which for the most part is on the east side or the right-hand side of NC Three, is in a water supply watershed, a WS Two watershed, which is a fairly restrictive water supply watershed district. When we get around the reservoir itself, it gets even more restrictive. But again, especially in Iredell County, I want to point out, right here on the east side, which is the ridge line, that's in water supply watershed. The left side, or the west side, is not. So the lay of the land here, with NC Three being the ridge line itself, will play a very crucial role in the future if and how land develops along the NC Three corridor. Land on the left side is more developable, per se, than a land on the right side. And as far as the zoning regulations that are in place, when I say that, most communities have a rural-type zoning. Rural takes a lot of different flavors. If you're in the water supply watershed, it's one unit per two acres. Doesn't matter what the underlying zoning is. Your RA zoning is about two units per acre. Mooresville zoning along three is basically two, three, or five units per acre. And Cabarrus County, Cabarrus County's base zoning along the corridor is even more restrictive than the water supply watershed regulations are. Their base zoning is one unit per three acres, which really, at the best of my knowledge, that has to be some of the most restrictive zoning in this region, at least that I'm aware of. And of course, at Odell and Davidson Road, Odell School and Davidson Road, is that mixed commercial residential development, the Wayne Brothers Site in Kannapolis. Along the East-West Connector, it's mostly zoned RA by Iredell County, with a variety of different zones in areas that have been annexed by Mooresville. And there has been talk between Mooresville and Iredell County of this urban service agreement, Ron mentioned that before, to be adopted and implemented as utilities are expanded by the town of Mooresville. Now, where the guts of the plan lies is right here. This is the future land use map, and this is a plan. And if the county, excuse me, the Board of Commissioners sees fit to adopt the plan, one of the things that they'd be adopting is this map, which shows how future land is envisioned along the corridor. And you'll see, whoops, you will see that most of the corridor in Iredell County is one of two colors. This low-to-medium density residential on the west side, and a low-density residential on the east side. Again, the east side corresponds with the water supply watershed. There really isn't a whole heck of a lot you, Mooresville, anyone can do with that. There is more development opportunity on the west side. It's not subject to the water supply watershed restrictions. We've had a lot of discussion at the Staff and Steering Committee level, and there were basically, with the exception of the Center Avenue area in Mooresville proper, and a lot of that already is zoned by Mooresville for commercial and mixed-use development purposes, three concentrated areas where development was proposed. In and around where the East-West Connector, Rocky River Road intersects with three, just north of where the DEI facility is, since that facility is there, that area is served, can be served by Mooresville with utilities, having what we call an employment center there, low-impact jobs. And yes, they even could be industrial, low-impact, to fit in with the landscape that's already there. This is not for retail purposes, per se. It's not for large shopping centers. This is for jobs to take advantage of the connector and what's there already. If we go down to the Johnson Dairy Road intersection, which lies in Iredell County's jurisdiction, a small commercial, mixed neighborhood, commercial residential node. This is small-scale, neighborhood-oriented, for people to buy convenience-type goods. It's not a place where you would envision a Lowe's, a Walmart, a Target to go to. This is neighborhood-oriented, and having both residential and commercial there is, and we went back and forth on this a good bit, but we came back, we came up with that as a potential location. A much more significant location for development is at the Shears Road, East-West Connector interchange. There is one shopping center there at the southeast corner, I believe there's a food line there. But building that intersection out for a mixture of higher-density residential and commercial development was what was agreed upon by all. When we get into Cabarrus County, and I won't spend too much time on this, but this is the Wayne Brothers Site right there. Building upon this in a mixed neighborhood, commercial residential type development, and Kannapolis said, and this would likely be in Kannapolis's jurisdiction, in a more of a traditional neighborhood development type, something that's more walkable, more urban in nature, is what Kannapolis would like to see there. And then a whole lot of low-density development, the lowest density possible, because of Cabarrus County zoning and the water supply watershed regulations. And then, once we get to the Parkway, a variety of more higher-intensity, both residential and commercial type developments. For the East-West Connector, now, we're talking about what type of roads that the road should be. For the East-West Connector, we talked about it being a four-lane suburban boulevard with a median and sidewalks on both sides, primarily suburban residential. I talked about Shears Road, I talked about the Employment Center, and then I talked about the Mountmoren Plan being implemented at the intersection near NC One Fifteen. One of the things that was really, really important here was internal connectivity of new developments. If the East-West Connector gets built, we don't want to have the East-West Connector being the only avenue of getting from point A to point B. That's when you start having traffic problems. So developments themselves that build off of the connector should be connecting with each other, so people have various opportunities of getting from point A to point B besides using the connector. And then, of course, the USA concept being in place here. This is a schematic of the four-lane suburban boulevard. Now, for NC Three, we have a couple of different variations to what NC Three should look like. In the areas north of Rocky River Road, and this is primarily in Mooresville, and this is something that's already included in Mooresville's CTP, Comprehensive Transportation Plan, is to have an urban boulevard with a median north of Rocky River Road into Mooresville. As you get closer into town, pretty near Center Avenue, where the older development is, probably leave that as a two-lane section, because there is just not enough roadway. You'll be taking people's front lawns if you widen it there. So Mooresville said, you know what, we just don't need it. Now, from Rocky River Road, south to Odell School Road in Cabarrus County, a four-lane rural boulevard with median and a multipurpose path on one side of the road. Four-lane, median. This would be the ultimate build-out for NC Three. And again, let me add, again, that there is no funding for this right now. Once we get past Odell School Road, to once we get to the Kannapolis Parkway, maintain that two-lane section, because there just isn't going to be a whole heck of a lot of development going on there. Access management, this is something that the Staff and Steering Committee felt was important, that irrespective of the jurisdiction, that the jurisdictions have standards in place that address the location, the number of curb cuts. This really is important now for the future of NC Three. That neighborhood business node near Johnson Dairy Road, I mentioned that before, view shed buffers. And I know the Planning Board had some concerns about the view shed buffers, and I certainly understand that, understand their concerns. I'll be talking about them in a second. And that's something I fully respect. If there are concerns about view shed buffers, that it might be premature, but that's something that, if the Board of Commissioners choose not to implement, that's perfectly fine. In a perfect world, especially in Iredell County, but a perfect world along the entire corridor, that you had uniform regulations, and I preach this no matter where I go, that you should have seamless development, whether in your Iredell County's jurisdiction or Mooresville jurisdiction, if you're along the same road that has the same characteristics. In a perfect world, the regulations would be uniform, in a perfect world. There is a cross-section of the rural Parkway with the four lanes and the median in the middle. And there's the cross-section of the two-lane suburban boulevard going from Rocky River Road into Mooresville. This is an aerial that would show how a view shed buffer would be put in place. And a view shed buffer, again, the Steering Committee and the staff felt this would be a good way of preserving the rural character. And it's basically to maintain an undeveloped area along certain portions of the corridor if and when it widens. And when I say certain portions of the corridor, if you take a look at this section of NC Three near the church in southern Iredell County, you'll notice that the right-hand side, the east side, was, is a few trees, but not heavily wooded. You go on the west side, it's heavily wooded. The purpose of the view shed buffers is to maintain that rural vista, that rural landscape, as you drive down the road. And regulations, and the study does not go into specific regulations, but if regulations were developed, the west side of the road where you have the trees, you don't need that wide of a view shed buffer, because Mother Nature's already doing it. If you've got on the other side that's just pasture land, you want to set development a little bit farther back, so you literally aren't building on the top of today's road, let alone the top of a widened road, which may happen at some point in the future. That is the plan itself. And as part of the plan, what I did for each of the four communities, I went into all of their codes to see what ultimately, what could be done from a land use regulation perspective to put this in action. So again, what I presented here to four is the plan itself. These are things, and it's almost like a menu, that the Board of Commissioners could elect to do, to put the plan in place. As far as the land use plan, making amendments to the land use plan, you don't. The Horizons Plan took this, and literally, this plan was written before the Horizons Plan was adopted, and the consultants took this plan, and at least from the land use perspective, incorporated in the Horizons Plan. So there is no changes to your land use plan, per se, that are needed. As far as signage goes, again, by the Johnson Dairy Node, Johnson Dairy Road Node, that should have the word "road" over there, perhaps you might want to look at your signage regulations. Current regulations allow signs up to three hundred square feet in area and thirty feet in height. It may be too large for that area. One action item is to apply RPO district regulations, or perhaps a new overlay district suitable, suited for NC Three itself. I'm going to refer to the RPO, but hand-in-hand with that is, you want regulations that are suitable, that are proper for NC Three, okay? Off-premise real estate signs. This could be a concern, especially along the East-West Connector. Current regulations prohibit such signs in rights of way, but otherwise, there are no limitations. I can tell you, in Charlotte, on Friday nights, these I can tell you in Charlotte, on Friday nights, these real estate signs, you'll see them on major roads, 10, 20, 30 at a time, and they're all outside of the right-of-way because you're not allowed to put them in the DOT right-of-way. They appear on Friday nights, Monday mornings, they're gone. There are some communities that outlaw them entirely. Yours just says that they're outside of the right-of-way. This is something you might want to consider. You see that Mooresville prohibits those signs. You might want to consider, at some point in the future, having some regulations addressing the off-premise real estate signs. Access management, and you heard some of this dialogue before, about the curb-cut separation of 300 feet. The bottom line is this, 10, 20, 30 years from now, for NC 3 to be a functional road with the increased traffic, access management is going to have to be addressed. How it's done, you have some regulations in place in certain parts of the county, you need to fully address this editorial comment, well, not editorial comment, I think it needs to be fully addressed along NC 3. The regulations do not address the number and location of access points in non-subdivisions. In subdivisions, you do address them, in non-subdivisions, you don't. And that's something here that I think that you need to take a look at. The view shed buffers, I addressed this before, and you do, when I say you do, the county does address open space, the provision of open space in certain subdivisions, in your cluster subdivision regulations. You do require a 30% open space setup, and you could take that 30%, and with doing just a little bit of surgery to say that that open space along NC 3, we're going to put it up against the road, so that we preserve that open space vista. You do have the mechanism, a mechanism for this already in place through your cluster subdivision standards, but not all subdivisions, as it says here, are cluster, probably not all of them will be cluster, and it doesn't, if you want to preserve that vista, there's something that, the county will need to be doing something proactively to do that. And this is something, again, up and down the corridor, all of the communities perhaps could work collectively to adopt similar-type regulations, because to a large degree, you're all facing the same thing, and this is something that all of the jurisdictions could perhaps be working on collectively. Building design standards, and this will have admittedly, in Iredell County's jurisdiction, a limited applicability, but you do not have on NC 3 right now, any design standards on buildings. There are, of course, standards for where the building is located, but the feel of the building, the materials of the building, you don't have anything in place now. This is something you might want to consider, we've got that Employment Center that's proposed near DEI, and also that node at Johnson Dairy Road. Off-street parking, again, there was some discussion before. How much of it should be upfront? 30%, 40%, 60%, 0%? Right now, there are no regulations addressing that, and this would have applicability, both again, at Johnson Dairy Road and near the Rocky River Road intersection. And I believe, that's the last slide, sidewalks and the multipurpose path. Sidewalks are required now for only certain subdivisions, it's not a standard for all subdivisions. And this is something where, again, I think Mooresville and Iredell County could work collectively on. We want that sidewalk path on which side? The west side, the east side? Actually, we never did say which side we wanted it on. So if someone is providing sidewalks, or a multipurpose path, working collectively with Mooresville as three develops, saying, "We will have it on the east side, but we'll have it on the west side." And again, now's the time to start working with them, and internally within Iredell County, to make that happen. And I think that is the last slide. So again, these last 10 slides or so were just things that the county could work on, on all of them, some of them, whatever you choose as being the most important, to help implement the guts of the plan. And at this point, Mr. Williams, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any question for Mr. Dustin? Okay. Apparently, they understand their document?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Apparently, they understand the document, and there's no questions at this time.
Well, thank you. Am I voice-acting?
I declare this meeting to be in a public hearing for consideration and approval of the NC 3 corridor study. Anyone who wants to speak either for or against the study? Seeing note one, I declare the public hearing closed. Have an entertaining motion.
Mr. Chairman, I request that, or I recommend that the Board approve the NC 3 corridor study.
Okay. Motion's been made to approve the study. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I support the motion. The thing I think we need to be careful about as we proceed with this, and I talked to Mr. Dustin prior to the meeting, is the impact of the extension of water and sewer. And as he stated, and I think correctly so, Highway 3 is pretty much on a ridge line, and that ridge line, as it heads south, it begins to bend to the east, which means it creates a basin. Part of that basin will be more easily served by Mooresville, and part of that basin's going to be more easily served by Kannapolis. And that's something that's, if development's going to occur along that corridor, it's going to have to be worked out between those two jurisdictions at some point. And if we get there, I guess, one of us will be sitting in the meeting, I hope not playing referee, but working out any differences we may, we may have. But other than that, and I understand their reluctance to get in and all of that, because it's imponderable what may come up in the future, but that's something that'll have to be worked out. But I do think, overall, it's a good plan.
Any other discussion? Hear none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Mr. Mashburn.
Mr. Chairman, under the Administrative Matters, the first item is the annual election of the Chairman and the Vice Chairman. General Statute 153A39 says, "At its first regular meeting in December of each odd-numbered year, the Board of Commissioners shall choose one of its members as Chairman for the ensuing year unless the Chairman is elected by search for the people or otherwise designated by law. The Board shall also, at that time, choose a Vice Chairman to act in the absence or disability of the Chairman." And in accordance with that statute, and in accordance with the procedures as adopted by the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, the County Manager Chairs during the election of the Chairman, so at this time, we, the nominations for Chairman will be opened, and Chair will receive those nominations.
Chair, I nominate Mr. Williams.
Say again, please.
Mr. Williams.
Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams has been nominated. Are there other nominations? If not, do I hear a motion that the nominations are, be closed, and that Mr. Williams be elected by acclamation?
So moved.
Have a motion that nominations be closed and Mr. Williams be elected by acclamation. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Mr. Chairman, you've been elected Chairman, so I'll turn it back over to you at this point in time.
Well, now proceed to elect the Vice Chairman. Are there any nominations for Vice Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Mr. Norman.
Mr. Norman has been nominated. Are there other nominations?
I'm moved that nominations be closed, and we accept, and we make Mr. Norman Vice Chairman by acclamation, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made that we make Mr. Norman be Vice Chairman by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Motion carries. I do appreciate the encouragement from this group and the support you've given me. I know this past year's been a trying time, and for both Mr. Norman and myself, and we just appreciate your support, and we hope we able to continue and move forward. Other items on the Administrative Matters? Mr. Mashburn?
Okay. Second item is request that you approve a revision to the rules of procedure pertaining to agenda briefings. Several years ago, the Board did adopt in its rules of procedure that a agenda briefing would be held at 5:00 on the same date as the regular County Commissioners Meeting. That, we have suspended that procedure, but the rules of procedure have not changed. If you'll look, the proposed, basically adds language that says, should the draft... First of all, it deletes the requirement for a 5:00 meeting, but then it adds language saying that, "Should the drafted agenda for regular meetings contain a large business items, the Chairman of the Board, after consultation with County Manager or the Clerk to the Board, may call for an agenda briefing. If a briefing session is called, it will occur at 5:00 PM," and basically, everything else remains the same.
Okay, would this be a consent item?
That's fine. Consent? Ms. Blumstein will at this time present the portion dealing with public official bonds.
Thank you. Each year, you're required to review the public official bonds for the Registered Deeds Tax Collector, Deputy Tax Collector, Finance Officer, and Sheriff. These are attached for your consideration, the total premium, which is, and these funds are budgeted, it's $862. I'd request the Board approve the public official bonds.
Any questions? Consent?
Thank you.
Next item is a request for adoption of a resolution requesting that Iredell County participate in the funding of a Community Transportation Service Plan. Our Transportation Director, Ben Garrison, will make that presentation.
Thank you. The action that's required tonight is for Iredell County to adopt a resolution indicating that we'll participate in a, in the funding of a Community Transportation Service Plan for Iredell County, in the amount of the 10% local match, and that as the Director is authorized to enter contracts with NC DOT to execute any agreements with NC DOT. And the other part of this motion would be to approve a budget amendment, number 33, for the appropriation of fund balance to provide for the local match for this, for this study. A Community Transportation Service Plan is a mandate, is a requirement for us to receive state and federal funding. Our last plan was done in 1994, I think it's turned yellow by now. Through the years, I've asked about updating the plans, and I've been told that, well, we've put them on hold, or we're reviewing the process, or whatever. Well, in the fall of 2008, the Federal Transit Administration came into DOT and did a triennial review, and found major deficiencies with NC DOT, one of which was that they had allowed these plans to lapse. So now, DOT finds himself in a situation between now and June 30th of 2011, they have 50 or more of these plans to have updated. Obviously, since ours is a 1994 vintage, we're high on their list to update. The process is that DOT has done a request for proposals to hire consultants to do these studies. They have selected eight to 10 consultants, we were allowed to choose. We suggested that we use HDR, which is a company out of Charlotte. They are familiar with our area, they're also currently involved in doing the same plan for Rowan County. On 12/17/09, we'll hold a scoping meeting to look at the whole process that'll take place over the next six to seven months. Basically, what these plans do is they take a snapshot of where we are with transit right now in our community, and then they look at, over the next five years, developing performance measures and goals for transit over the next, the next five-year period of time. There's a lot of public involvement that goes into these plans. There's a Steering Committee that'll be selected to take part in this planning process. But the goal is to develop a plan that would be suitable for Iredell County to meet transit needs. And then finally, the final draft of the plan would come back to the County Commissioners for the ultimate approval. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, Mr. Garrison? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is this a consent?
Yes, sir. Okay. Item E is a request for adoption of capital project ordinance on the Union Grove Elementary School and Mitchell Community College. Ms. Blumstein?
We're scheduled to close the financing on December 18th for Union Grove School and Mitchell Community College. I'd request the approval of these two project ordinances so we can get started right away.
Any questions? Okay, consent?
I think you also have the next item.
That's request for approval of amended Mooresville graded school district capital project ordinance.
That's correct. The 2006 project ordinances that were adopted for Mooresville graded schools, we're ready to close that out. The cost came in considerably less than originally anticipated. Mooresville gave us an upfront payment of $1,542,418 towards these projects, and we have $957,658 remaining that we would like to pay back to them for their capital fund.
Question?
We can't do a Bev Perdue or a Mike Easley and somehow finagle that we can get to keep it for ourselves? I guess not, we'll give it back.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is a request for approval of a budget amendment to use some Medicaid Max funds to upgrade Health Department patient accounting software and to purchase electronic medical record system. Donna Campbell, Health Director, will make that presentation.
17 years ago, when we moved into our new office on Turnersburg Highway, the county purchased our current QS computer patient management system. The QS system is no longer going to offer upgrades because it's an older system, and also, the QS system does not have electronic medical records, and the Health Department staff are recommending that we move to electronic medical records. In 2014, the federal government will require healthcare providers to use electronic medical records. So we've been looking at this for a while, and through a grant, the Iredell County Health Department participated in an extensive review or evaluation of electronic medical record software in collaboration with Cabarrus and Mecklenburg Counties. We had 11 staff members in the review and included our specific requirements and needs, and the Insight Software Program was found to be the best match for our needs. So we're requesting approval to purchase Insight Software and accounting system upgrade, computer equipment, related supplies, and maintenance, and the entire budget amendment will be in the amount of $432,765. 100% of this will be Medicaid Max dollars, there will be no county funds in this request. We did work closely with Dean Lille, the Iredell County purchasing agent, to assure that we followed the appropriate procedures and correctly worded the request, so I'd like to read to you the specific request. "We request approval of budget amendment for the use of fund balance reserved for Medicaid Max funds to upgrade our patient accounting software and purchase an electronic medical record system, and waiver of bidding subsequent to NCGS 143-129E6II, exception to bidding that we followed the appropriate procedures and correctly worded the request, so I'd like to read to you the specific request. We request approval of budget amendment for the use of fund balance reserved for Medicaid Max funds to upgrade our patient accounting software and purchase an electronic medical record system, and waiver of bidding subsequent to NCGS 143-129E6II, exception to bidding requirements based on standardization or compatibility, and award of contract purchase NetSpart Insight electronic medical record system software modules. I know this is a lot of information, but quick, do you have any questions?
Just so that people can better understand, this is being paid for with Medicaid Max money. Can you very briefly state what Medicaid Max money is?
We have annual cost analysis by the state, and it tells us how much it costs us above what we reimburse for our Medicaid costs. And so each year, it's not guaranteed, but we get about 60 cents on the dollar covering the gap between what it costs the health department to serve our Medicaid clients and what they actually paid us in Medicaid fees. And so in the county's wisdom, a previous health director worked with county management, and we've been able to put that money aside to pay for our interpreters and for large capital purchases and major renovations of the health department. So that's why we were able to have these funds available to purchase this particular software program.
And Ms. Campbell, you know, there's been a lot of debate and recommendations on cutting on different sorts of healthcare proposals. Are you aware of any that that impact Medicaid Max funding at all? Are you aware of Medicaid Max being on the block, so to speak, with some of these Medicaid reductions that they're talking about?
It's never been guaranteed to us, and that is why we never built it directly into our budget every year. That is why we said you don't want to put actual staff positions funded by this, because we don't know from year to year how much we're going to get and whether or not we're going to get it. So I've not heard that it's on the block, but I never count on it at 100% as far as coming to us every year. And so that's why we set this aside, and it's really been very helpful for helping us keep our interpreters covered, and it paid for the renovation of the health department, and we're also looking to do a downstairs renovation with these monies.
The renovations aren't required, but the interpreters are, correct?
Right.
Right, okay, make sure everybody understands that. Thank you.
Any other questions? Consent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item H was deleted. Item I is approval to apply for a Parks and Recreation Trust Fund grant in the amount of $133,426. Robert Woody, Parks and Recreation Director.
Good evening. On November 6th, I come to you to... we had a request to have a property donated to the county, which was the Scotts Recreation Community Center, and part of that discussion was to apply for a part of grant to make improvements to that property. And I'm here this evening to request approval to apply for that grant in the amount of This grant will improve the buildings, it will insulate the buildings, it will update the doors and the locks on the buildings, it will add a walking trail to the property, basketball courts, horseshoe pits, new playground equipment as well. We will use the value of the property as a match for this grant, therefore, it should not cost the county any money to receive these funds. Any questions?
Questions? Has that property been appraised at this day?
It has not been appraised, but I did contact our tax revow folks to see about what it would come in at, and we're estimating that between $130,000 and $134,000 it should come in. Now, if we come in under that, and we will have to make up the difference for that match, and if that's the case, I'm proposing that it comes out of the park fund. But we're expecting it to come in pretty close to that.
Any other questions? Consent?
Consent. Thank you. Item J is a request to approve a resolution pertaining to the Talon Systems Building Renovations Project. Mike Smith, GSDC Economic Development Director, make that presentation.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I come before you to request a resolution pertaining to the Talon Systems Building Renovation Project. This is a project that is considering our community for a new facility, and we need a resolution pertaining to the Rural Centers Building Restoration Grant. For this project, there is a cash match of $5,000 of the total grant amount for the project administration, along with $14,400 for administration, for a total, along with the reuse grant that we are making application to for the rural center, which is $480,000. That's a total public investment of $499,400. The reason we are looking, we're asking for this resolution from you this evening is this is a match program, and the match that is required from the county is this $19,400, and with this, if this company does make a decision to come to Aridale County, they will actually pay those administrative fees.
Mr. Smith? Seth?
Do we need to reword the part of the resolution to include that that amount is part of the previously improved incentive? There's a note.
We don't really have anything actually submitted to us in writing that says that the company will cover that, so I think what we're saying is that we just... the resolution should imply that that's where the funds for the local match would come from.
Exactly. We have discussed that with the client, is if they make this decision, that they would provide those funds.
Okay. Consent? Okay. Next two items, I'm going to ask that we entertain motions on these two items.
Item K, and Mr. Smith, you may want to stay available for this as well. Item K is request for approval of revision of the Economic Development incentive for Providencia USA. And you may want to go ahead and just explain, or Mr. Pope, I'm not sure which one wants to make that explanation as to why this is being brought back to the county commissioners for their consideration.
Mr. Chairman, let me set the stage. Earlier, we... the commissioners approved economic incentive for Providencia. That incentive was based on a plan whereby the county would purchase, county and city jointly, would purchase property in the West Industrial Park and resell it to the Providencia and finance it for them. That was based on an assumed investment, I believe, of $120 million. Since that time, the plans for Providencia have changed as a result, largely of the economic climate, and they've scaled back their operations somewhat. I believe the current anticipated investment is $70 to $80 million. They have decided that it would not be necessary for the city and county to purchase the property, they would actually purchase the property themselves, so we wouldn't be out on a limb for that. What they would be asking you to do, therefore, is considerably less than you previously authorized, but because it's a change, we thought it ought to come back to you. Mike can give you the details on what the change is.
What they are requesting is, as we've... the county's policy in terms of new investment in excess of 30 million, in this case, it would be, as Mr. Pope indicated, between 70 and 80 million dollars, and looking at a grant back to the company of 80% of those taxes for a six-year period. And again, this is a great opportunity for the community in terms of new tax base over the long haul, certainly with what they are doing on this 43-acre site. They would not make this purchase without the plans to eventually do much more than what they are doing initially. Again, as Mr. Pope indicated, they originally were talking about more than one line, but again, because of the global economic conditions right now, they were reluctant to commit to more than that for the time being. But what this is, is between 70 and 80 million dollars, and it will be 56 new jobs to be created by September of 2011. These jobs will pay more than the county average.
Mr. Smith, my understanding is that the city approved their incentive based on a minimum investment of 63 million and a maximum investment of 70 million. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
That would mean that they would have to have $63 million worth of investment to trigger any incentive, and we would not pay any incentive on any investment in excess of 70 million. I assume that... I haven't been specifically told this by the Providencia people, but I assume they're asking the county for the same thing they asked the city?
Yes.
Our policies have been mirror images.
Some questions?
Ms. Smith and Mr. Pope, my understanding is that we've committed to this on September 2nd, 2008, in a different form, but basically, if we committed to... I'm just going to make up an easy number. If we committed to $100, we made that commitment, and now we're just coming back and we're scaling down and keeping a commitment, which is somewhat less than $100. Maybe it's $70 or $80.
Correct.
Is that...
That's a fair summary, yes.
That's all.
Any other question? Is there a motion?
Motion to accept your proposal.
Is motion to accept a proposal, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, I think you could stay there, and I think Mr. Russ Russell-Lugerson from Morseville, MSI DC, can join you on the next item, request from the Economic Development Directors regarding the America Recovery and Investment Act project.
Thank you. What I would like to do, a couple things on this. This is a tremendous opportunity for our community in terms of financing tools to help create jobs and investment, and what I would like to do in terms of, for this first portion of the public sector, I would like to defer to the City of Statesville, city manager, and also the Town of Troutman Finance Director for my portion.
As well as Morseville... excuse me. We have a representative from Morseville, Maya Stetser.
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to participate in these recovery bonds. It's going to be, I think, very helpful to the City of Statesville. I want to thank Mr. Mashburn and Ms. Blumstein for providing us with a great deal of information as we've learned through this process, and we thank you for your bringing the consultant in, because she was very, very helpful. One of the considerations of this project is that they, like all stimulus packages, be shovel-ready. And we have a project that will be accepting bids on the 17th of December. It's a $3 million fire station to provide service to the eastern section of Statesville and to Interstate 40 as it moves northward. This is truly an economic development issue for the county, because not only does it provide $3 million of construction monies, it provides 15 new professional jobs, whether they be public or private. So with your permission, we would like to submit through the resolution, we have provided Ms. Moore a request to the Department of Commerce for $3 million of the RZB bonds. Working with our bond attorney, we will see how that process works, should you accept our proposal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll answer any questions.
Okay. Questions? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Steve Shealy. I'm the Finance Director for the Town of Troutman. Troutman would like to request an allotment of $4,160,000. Our project is a business park. These funds would provide infrastructure to the park, water, sewer, streets, storm drains, et cetera, which would in turn provide a facility that would provide new jobs and increase the tax base, which would, of course, be a benefit to the county as well as the town. We've been working on this project for a couple of years, along with Mr. Smith from GSDC. We have been joined in this endeavor with, by Energy United and Duke Energy as well, who are interested in partnering with us on this project. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any question? Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm Maya Stetser. I'm the Director of Finance for the Town of Morseville, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear tonight. The Town of Morseville passed a resolution last night at our meeting requesting the remaining portion of the funds and any other funds that might be available. We have a bond issue that we are working with the local government commission that is scheduled for sale possibly in February. We have some last-minute permitting checkboxes that we're waiting on for our wastewater treatment plant project that is a part of this revenue bond package. The revenue bond package is a $33.5 million package. We do have a state revolving fund loan for a little over $11.8 million for the wastewater treatment plant expansion. It is a 2 million gallon per day expansion to our wastewater treatment plant. Additional projects within that revenue bond, which would qualify for these... for this recovery zone bond, would be the Presbyterian Lift Station, the wet weather equalization project, which is a part of that wastewater treatment plant expansion, and a belt dryer that is part of the wastewater treatment plant expansion as well. We do have a total of $11.8 million... excuse me, $21.7 million in those other projects. So as you can see, the remaining five would only be a little bit that we could use, and we could use more if there's any return to the state. So our resolution does authorize us to go back and ask the Department of Commerce for any of the other funds that might be returned to the state, should there be any. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you for showing the Christmas spirit. You're the only other person that knew it was December.
Okay, we'll accept a motion now on the recovery zone, sell the bonds for the public sector.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept these requests and approve them as presented.
Okay, the motion's been made to accept these requests. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. This is the recovery zone facility bond for the private sector.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. There is a second portion of these recovery zone bonds that are to be used by the private sector, and what I'm asking you tonight on behalf of Providencia USA is to be able to use 9.1 million of these recovery zone facility bonds on the private sector side to help finance their project. This would be a great opportunity, again, in terms of investment and jobs for our community, and this would not cost the county with this particular program. So it's a great financing tool, and we appreciate your support.
Okay. I have a note here that Mr. Cliff Bridges from Providencia would like to speak. Would he like to speak this time?
He's with PGI.
Good evening. Chairman Williams and honorable commissioners, I'm actually Cliff Bridges. I'm the... I'm the Public Relations spokesperson for PGI, which is a marketer and a global manufacturer of non-wovens. We are a corporate citizen here in, we're a citizen in Iredale County with a manufacturing facility in Mooresville. We've been there since nineteen ninety-six. We employ about a hundred-plus people there in that facility, and we also have numerous people who reside in Iredale County who work in our global headquarters in Charlotte. A few years back, we invested about forty million dollars in the Mooresville facility, expanding the footprint of that manufacturing facility as well as advancing state-of-the-art manufacturing equipment. Globally, we have about three thousand people, and what we do with our non-wovens is they are converted into products for medical and hygiene applications. We intend to stay very focused in the non-wovens business and hopefully expand our footprint in this business, not only in North Carolina, but elsewhere. PGI does applaud the partnership between government and business toward the advancement of modern manufacturing in the state of North Carolina. And as we're growing our capabilities and commitments to the non-wovens industries, we are hopeful that with our reputation here and our partnership in the community, that we will be allowed consideration for the same incentives that are being considered for other non-woven companies, such that, or in other words, that we have a level playing field in this business. We thank you for allowing us to speak tonight, and we wish to continue to have open dialogue here with all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Bridges. I just read what's down here. I don't make this stuff up, so.
Word potato on there anywhere?
Okay, continue on with the.
Do y'all have a project that's ready to go?
We, of course, are always looking to expand our opportunities, and there are various things that are being considered here.
The question was, do y'all have a project that's ready to go?
Do we have a project that's ready to go? No, sir, we do not have a project ready to go. But we could have a project here sometime in the near future. That's always a possibility.
How near, Mr. Bridges?
I would say, you know, it's, there are various things that are being considered, and obviously, the timing here, became aware of this situation, but I would say that it's something that we could, you know, possibly bring to a conclusion here, maybe before the end of the year or in the next three to four months.
Any money that's not used, that's been allocated to local government, reverts back to the state. Isn't that right, Mr. Smith? So if that money reverts back to the state and is unused, then we have an opportunity to apply for that money in the future. So at some time when you're ready to make a proposal, if you can come back to us, we'd be, I'm sure, willing to make application to the state for those funds for you in the future.
We would greatly appreciate that consideration for that opportunity.
He's asking for the normal incentive that we would give any other company. That's for our local incentives.
Well, we could give him that. These, my understanding, these pretty much equal out the tax-free bonds that he could go to the market and secure the debt and pay back, right? In addition to any incentive that he could be provided. Russ, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that.
Yeah, I actually, first of all, thank PGI for being a great corporate citizen. Big fan. Actually, as long as we stay within those timeframes, when they do the pullback in December fifteenth, there will be, most people assume there will be monies turned back in that we will be able to access, as long as the timeframe with their now, announce a project to win the deadlines for the bonds to be issued. And we would be more than happy to go after additional allocation from the state to support any project in the Mooresville South Iredale, and particularly with PGI.
So it's safe to say you'll be in touch, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Back on track. Recovery zone facility bonds, private sector. We've talked about Providencia, well.
Providencia's up first.
Providencia's last.
I don't think they're here. Maybe they are.
Smith can do it.
Were there other questions that I could answer for you for Providencia?
Nothing's changed from what was presented at the meeting Thursday.
And I would also like to say, certainly, PGI has been a great corporate citizen for Iredale County, and this is a great opportunity. It's certainly an example of industry clustering, and I think it's a positive thing for all of us. So I'm certainly glad you're here and glad you're doing well and have future plans.
Okay. Okay. There's a motion that we approve the recovery zone facility bonds for Providencia USA Incorporated.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made that we approve the bonds. All, any other comments? Not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries. Atrium at the Lake.
Mr. Chairman, Board, thank you for this opportunity. It was interesting, the NC three corridor presentation this evening is really tied right into what I'm going to be asking. You know, exit thirty-one opened up earlier this year. It is a designate employment zone for Mooresville South Iredale County, and of course, the largest developer and project on that interchange is Atrium at the Lake. We're requesting nine million fifty-nine thousand worth of these recovery zone bonds to be used for infrastructure that will permit this project to move forward with not only a commercial pod, but the building of a convention hotel with some eighty thousand square feet of meeting room space. The entire project built out will be eight hundred million dollars and employ several thousand people, including eighty thousand square feet worth of office space. So this truly would get this project moving forward to become the employment center that we all believe it will be and know it will be, and to get it started during a time when a lot of projects such as these are having difficulty getting off the ground. So we look forward to approval on the Atrium at the Lake request and to having future job growth and development at exit thirty-one in Mooresville.
Any questions, Russ? Okay, thank you, Russ. Thank you. Anyone else want to speak? I see a bunch of folders and.
Mr. Chairman, I'm David Parker. I'm one of the partners in general counsel for Atrium at the Lake. There was a presentation in front of the IRB Authority that I believe a couple of y'all heard that presentation. I'm not going to go through it again. You've heard me before about this topic. I would simply answer any questions that you, that you have. I will say this, this is, this is use-it-or-lose-it monies. If you do not allocate these monies, Raleigh will do the allocation. And I mentioned to these gentlemen from PGI that actually, after December fifteenth, this county commission loses any control over this allocation. It goes to Raleigh. We haven't had a real good history of allocations coming to western North Carolina from Raleigh, and I don't anticipate that it would start now. We would ask that you allocate this. There's no government backing of these bonds. It is basically permission to ask the bond market to fund these bonds. The county does not issue these bonds. It's that separate board authority. I would like to thank publicly Mr. Rogerson for bringing this opportunity to us. Had he not talked with us, frankly, we wouldn't have known about it. It's been a huge help, and these EDC folks that you help fund are doing their job. So if you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Any questions, Mr. Parker?
Yes. When, when did you become aware of these bonds?
We knew that there were Build America bonds, but they don't apply in the same way that these recovery zone facility bonds do. As a for instance, with the Build America bonds, there's a rebate program from the government. There is no rebate program for public, for private sector bonds here. These are simply tax-exempt bonds. I found out about them, Russ, when did you?
About six weeks ago.
Six weeks ago. We learned about it at about the same time y'all were being asked to deem parts of the county or all of the county as a recovery zone. I think that was November seventeenth. I was hearing about it from Brad Howard, who was here, and Russ, and really didn't know whether or not they would apply to us until about two, two and a half weeks ago, it was right before Thanksgiving, and started working on this. Mary Nash Rusher is Bond Counsel. She and Mr. Pope have worked together before. She is an extraordinarily knowledgeable person and has helped me climb up this learning curve. It's fascinating stuff. This is much easier for LGC to do than the SED bonds, for which, by the way, application has never formally been made by Mooresville. LGC has never even considered those bonds yet. They are not formally before them. These bonds, however, will go before them just as soon as the allocation is made here. They're just like industrial development bonds. LGC has a protocol for these. They know exactly how to handle these. And one of the very nice things about them is you can do a private placement or direct placement with it, whereas it's not too sure whether we can do that with the SED bonds or not. So this is a much easier creature for LGC to get its arms around. Mr. Johnson predicted a year ago that LGC would be the bear, and Mr. Johnson was right. So climbing up the hill as fast as I can. We appreciate the opportunity to go out and find this in the bond market. We have been told by two institutional buyers that they have a great interest in these bonds. We believe we can sell them.
Any other questions?
Question, Mr. Pope. Mr. Pope, when we did the SED, had the SED discussions with these folks earlier, we were, my understanding, compelled to do due diligence. In this case, we're not required to perform any due diligence?
No, we're not. We're not. The issue are here. This is, this is just like a regular, a regular industrial revenue bond. The only difference is they have expanded the program in effect to allow some uses for the industrial revenue bonds that previously were not allowed. Previously, it had to be manufacturing-type facility, commercial facilities did not qualify. But as part of the stimulus package, they've opened that bond up and made it available to a broader class of people, including any trader business, except a few sin trades, bad, bad people.
So Mr. Parker's destination is the same as it was previous, is the LGC. He's just arriving by a different route this time, and there'll be different criteria that he'll, he'll have to meet in order to secure their blessing.
That's right. The LGC is going to have to be, they're the guardians at the gate.
As a for instance, Mr. Johnson, these apparently will not have to be credit-enhanced if there is a single qualified institutional buyer that will take the entire issue. That is a huge difference. Makes it much more marketable.
You could go with the LGC with a letter of intent from a financial institution and probably secure their blessing then.
Yes, and they have to be big. They have to have a hundred million in at almost any, any particular time and do an average of ten million in investments each year. That tends to be large insurance companies, large banks, and large pension plans. These buyers are so sophisticated that essentially, LGC and the SEC says they can, they can do anything they want to.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the request.
Motion's been made. We approve the request for Atrium at the Lake. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries.
The next item is item M, request for approval of the November seventeenth, two thousand and nine minutes.
On consent?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The following items are the additions. Request for approval of Budget Amendment Number Thirty-four to recognize lottery proceeds. I think Dr. Kenny Miller and Susan Blumstein will probably make this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. Our Stateful Schools, of course, is moving forward with some, some of our capital projects. One of our projects, of course, is the Iredale Statesville Career Tech Center in Troutman. Most of this is pay-as-you-go, so what we are trying to do is recover funds that we have spent on some of that project through our fund balance from our lottery funds. So we're requesting that we be able to draw down lottery funds in the amount of one million two thousand. Those are on, in the account in Raleigh and are available. Be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay. Chair, entertain a motion. Well, I guess we can just do this on consent. Consent?
Yeah, consent.
Item O is request to approve eighty-two thousand seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars from funds currently appropriated for airport improvements as a matching fund for grants awarded to the City of Statesville. Ms. Blumstein?
I would gladly. This was added at the request of Mr. Johnson. The City of Statesville has received two additional runway and taxiway rehabilitation grants and one grant to acquire additional land. We have agreed in the past to provide equal funding for that local match with the city. The total of these grants is three hundred and two thousand five seventy-one requested in match. The city has about a little over a hundred and thirty-seven thousand on hand that they have retained from the runway overlay project that they would like to apply towards this match, leaving a hundred and sixty-five thousand needed, of which eighty-two thousand seven thirty-nine would come from the county. We carried forward a little over a hundred and sixty-four thousand to the fiscal year ten budget for the possible land acquisition at the airport, and I would recommend that we use some of those funds that are already in our budget for this match for these grants. Mr. Johnson may have something he'd like to add.
Well, that's pretty much the gist of it.
So basically, we're taking money that we had set aside for land, we're going to use it for these improvements.
Yeah, the, the money, I can't tell you exactly how much of the money they set aside for land that we don't actually need.
What we did at budget time, but we don't now.
Well, probably not last budget time. That money, some of that money's been set in there a while. When we did the original deal with the city on the airport, you can be reimbursed for land acquisition. You can go ahead and spend the money and be reimbursed for land acquisition, but you cannot be reimbursed for actual construction costs. So we set aside money for land acquisition, and then we did buy some land. There's going to be some land needed in the future, but not in the immediate future. So we think we can spend this money out of there and we'll still be in good shape. The only thing I would add to it is this is for runway and taxiway, but it'll also strengthen the ramp, where the airplanes will taxi up. Large aircraft who only be there for a short period of time can now taxi up on the ramp and not block the taxiway.
And we don't anticipate running that fund dry between now and the end of this budget year? Okay, thank you.
Could I just add one thing real quickly? This grant is matching, eighty thousand of this match is, is matching a million four fifty received from the feds for land acquisition. So almost all is going to be for land acquisition. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries.
And the final item is request to accept and approve the two thousand nine, ten North Carolina One Map Framework proposal and authorize the county manager to sign the proposal to be considered for funding. This is a grant application really for funds. Mr. Chris Bridges.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item was added late in the process. I do appreciate y'all allowing me the opportunity to present tonight. This proposal, an application, is to apply for a cost share program in support of a local ortho photography, which is the aerial imagery that's been utilized a lot as a base map layer in the presentations tonight. This application should lead to an actual contract for the cost sharing funds, which would come before the board, I anticipate, in the next month or so. Our current ortho photography project is on schedule, and we should have it complete by the end of the month. This cost share program would be between federal funding agency of USGS, the state of North Carolina, which is coordinated through the North Carolina Center for Geographic Information and Analysis, and the county. Awarded funding has averaged roughly about twenty thousand dollars with past awards ranging from six thousand dollars to thirty-nine thousand dollars. It's based on the size of the jurisdiction and how many awards that are available. And we don't know the specifics until we apply for it. Initially, the goal of the project was to assist twenty-five North Carolina counties each year to achieve updates in all one hundred counties on a four-year cycle. The funds have been limited the past couple of years, so they're targeting seven or eight counties a year right now. For the two thousand nine, two thousand ten flight season, eligible jurisdictions must be part of an urban region defined by the National Geospatial Intelligence Agency, which Ardo County does qualify and is eligible for this. Requirements of the county would be supply a copy of the ortho photography on a portable hard drive and also provide access to the imagery through the NCA One Map website, which is the state clearinghouse for geospatial data. So just request an approval to apply for this program and authorize county manager to.
Will this, will these funds impact the quality of our GIS site on the internet right now?
The current ortho project that we're in right now is a budgeted item, so this would offset that cost where we may have funds available for something. That is a project we're currently working on, the current county GIS website.
Right, okay. And, and, and on our current website, like, the two thousand five photos you can see and the two thousand eight photos, two thousand five were done during the fall, or the winter. Two thousand eight were during, during the summer, and there must have been fog on the lens or something. It was, it's pretty fuzzy stuff. So that means i- if we do this in a year, there'll be two thousand ten photos up?
It's two thousand nine.
Or two thousand?
Yeah, two thousand five currently out there is county flown imagery, but two thousand eight is flown by the state, and it was leafed on during roughly the month of June, at a, you know, a lot lower resolution. So it wasn't county flown imagery. This will be two thousand nine imagery that should be a little better quality than the two thousand five.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? Consent?
Yes, consent.
Thank you. Is that everything? Okay. Is there a motion we approve the consent agenda?
Oh, no, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Appointments to the boards and commissions. Zoning Board of Adjustments, two appointees. Recreation Advisory Board, two appointments. Information and Referral Service, one appointment. Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, two appointments. Board of Health, two appointments. Community Alternatives Programs Disabled Adults, CAPDA, six appointments. Criminal Justice Partnership Program Committee, CJPP, four appointments. Nursing Home Advisory Board, one appointment. Okay. Is there any unfinished business?
Well, those were actually appointments, weren't they, Mr. Chairman, rather than announcements?
Well, they are. Well, now we got to go back again. I thought I was getting somewhere.
You're right.
Okay. Excuse me. I was zoning board for adjustment, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I would nominate Mr. Steve Hughes. At the risk of offending Rick Gregory, I'll nominate Michael Johnson.
Okay, any other? Here none other. I move the nominations to be closed and accept these two by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Recreation Advisory Board, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Bill Benfield and David Rothwell.
Any other nominations? Here none. I move the nominations to be closed and accept those two by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Information and Referral Service, one appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Norma Rife.
Any other nominations? Here none. I move the nominations to be closed and expect, and.
Accept.
Accept. Norma Rife by acclamation. All, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Home and Community Care Block Grant Committee, two appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Joan Elam and Sue Wallser.
Any other nominations? Here none. I move the nominations to be closed and accept these two by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Board of Health, two appointments.
I don't know that they.
Well, I don't think they can be reappointed.
Right.
That's correct.
Can't.
So you need a physician and a public appointee.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to table.
I have a person who's expressed an interest, Mr. Cable, but since you're on that board, I'll defer to you. But if you have an opening, I, I know someone with him, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Motion's been made to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Community Alternatives Program Disabled Adults. I assume that they can't, the ones listed here.
I believe they can. Mr. Chairman, I nominate Lori Coon, Jackie Negley, Carolyn Lamb, Leanne Darty, Daphne Rogers, and Robin Norris.
Any other nominations? Here none. I move the nominations to be closed and accept these by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Motion carries. Um, is this the following individuals? Criminal Justice Partnership Program, CJPP, four appointments.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to take a chance on this Mashburn guy, and Susan Stroud, Ed Dearman, and Sally Dellinger.
And who? Sally who?
Dellinger.
Oh, yes, sir. Okay, any other nomination? Here none. I move the nomination to be closed and accept these by acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I heard five ayes.
Nursing Home Advisory Board, one appointment.
Motion to table, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's been made to table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Unfinished business.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think I got one more. The Region F Aging Advisory Committee, um, I'd nominate Ms. Linda Harmon.
Correct. Um, any other nominations? Here none. I move the closed nomination, except, who'd you say?
Ms. Harmon.
By acclamation. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like, sign. Any other unfinished business? Other comment period? We've had a lot of that tonight already. New business. County managers report.
Bethan, sir.
Okay. Okay, I now move that we go into closed session for GS 143, three eighteen eleven A three legal, GS 143, three eighteen dash eleven A four Economic Development, and GS 143, three eighteen eleven, um, A for personnel.
Play approach.